This is a special meeting. We do have a lengthy agenda. Ask everyone to turn their phones on silent or turn them on, turn them off. We're going to try to get through this. Commissioner Atkins has a funeral to attend. And before I ask, need to come up and say the invocation. I would like to, well, I obviously have Debbie Bailey here, Debbie, to do that. Debbie, we have a family of Charles Peewee Tackett. Peewee was a county employee that was killed in an accident which happened on Saturday, and he was a truck driver for the special crew. I grew up with him, went to high school with him. Families have always been close to my family. Just a terrible loss for his, his son and two daughters. And if you would just remember the Tackett family in your prayer, we would appreciate that. So at this time, I would like to ask Debbie Bailey, who's chair of the Pike County National Day of Prayer Committee and pastor of Grace Fellowship, to say the invocation for us.
Thank you, Debbie. I appreciate you giving us the opportunity to make this morning in prayer. Just want to remind everyone that next Thursday, May 2nd, is the National Day of Prayer. Our theme this year is "Lift Up the World, Lift Up the Word, Light Up the World." We have events in Pike County. We have one at noon in the Pike City Park. We have one at 6:00 p.m. in Phelps VFW. There's one at 7:00 p.m. at Elkhorn City Community Center. We're very thrilled to have three events in Pike County. I'm sure you'll want to let your family know this is the first time ever. Really excited.
Should I start again?
No, you're fine.
Okay. All right. To make sure, Thursday, May 2nd, National Day of Prayer. Pikeville City Park, noon. Phelps VFW at 6:00 p.m. And Elkhorn City Community Center at 7:00 p.m. Lift up the word, light up the world. Let's go to the Lord in prayer. Our most wonderful and loving and gracious Father in heaven, you are mighty, you are powerful, Lord, and we just come before your throne, Lord. First and foremost, we wanted to lift up this Tackett family to you, Lord. You know, you know the pain of loss, and I pray for your comfort as only you can do for his wife, for his children, for all the family, Lord, that you would just surround them, that they would feel your presence in their life as they go through these hard days ahead, that you would sustain them and that you would strengthen, Lord. And we just thank you that you are that God who is full of grace and mercy and compassion, and you hear the plea of our heart and you respond. And Lord, I just pray a special blessing upon Judge Jones and upon this entire court, Lord, as they administer to the people in Pike County. Lord, you know what our needs are. You know the areas that each person represents. And Lord, you know what decisions will best help our communities, help our people to thrive and to grow and to prosper and to have improved lives. And so we just come before you, asking your blessing upon this government in Pike County to help us be the best that we can possibly be. Help us to have the best lives and to, and to thrive, Lord. And we just pray that you would empower the decisions that are made, that you would just light the way with your word and with your light, and that you would give the courage to make the decisions that are the best for each individual in Pike County. So again, I thank you for Judge Jones. I thank you for this court and pray your blessing upon them. In your holy and mighty name we pray. Amen.
Thank you. This time, I would make a motion to appoint Penny Burke as the acting fiscal court clerk in Lisa's absence. Is there a second?
Second.
The motion is second. All in favor to appoint Penny as acting fiscal court clerk? Say aye. I oppose, but no. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Abshar?
Yeah.
Judge Jones?
Yes. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Judge Jones?
Present.
Commissioner Scott?
Present.
Commissioner Atkins?
Present.
Commissioner Abshar?
Present.
We have a quorum, and we are ready to proceed. I'd like to ask Commissioner Abshar if he would lead us in the place of allegiance.
I plead allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner. Next item is approval of the minutes of the April 2nd, 2024 meeting of the Pike County Fiscal Court. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion.
A motion by Commissioner Atkins. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Abshar. Any question or discussion? Seeing now, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Abshar?
Yeah.
Judge Jones?
Yes. Next item on the agenda is the adoption of a resolution proclaiming May 2nd, 2024, as the National Day of Prayer in Pike County. Colonel Downey, would you please read the resolution?
National Day of Prayer. Whereas the National Day of Prayer is an annual day of observance when people of all faiths are asked to turn to God in prayer and mediation. And whereas because of the faith of many of our founding fathers, public prayer and national days of prayer have a longstanding and significant history in American tradition. And whereas on April 17th, 1952, President Harry S. Truman signed a bill proclaiming a National Day of Prayer, encouraging Americans to pray for America and its leaders. In 1988, the law was amended, establishing the day as the first Thursday in May, as it still continues. And whereas the National Day of Prayer stands as a call for us to humbly come before God, seeking his guidance for our leaders and his grace upon us as a people, we need to lift up our nation, leaders and citizens in prayer, that they may be filled with the knowledge, wisdom and guidance of the glory of God for the healing of our people, of this great nation. And whereas the theme of National Day of Prayer 2024 in the United States is "Lift Up the World and Light Up the World," is based upon 2 Samuel, Chapter 22, verse 29, which reads, "For you are my lamp, O Lord, and my God lightens my darkness. For you I can run against a troop; and be my God, I can leap over a wall." This God, his way is perfect. The word of the Lord proves true. He is a shield for all those who take refuge in him. And whereas millions of people will celebrate the National Day of Prayer with prayer gatherings held at state capitals, county courthouses, on the steps of city halls, and in schools, businesses, churches and homes. Now therefore, I, Ray S. Jones, Pike County Judge Executive, and the Pike County Fiscal Court, do hereby proclaim the 2nd day of May, 2024, as National Day of Prayer in Pike County, and urge all citizens to give thanks for their many blessings, and ask for God's continued guidance, protection and mercy as we meet the challenges before us. Ray Jones, Pike County Judge Executive, Ronald Scott, Commissioner District 1, Bubba Atkins, Commissioner District 2, Jim Abshar, Commissioner District 3.
Is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
Motion.
We have a motion by Commissioner Atkins. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Scott. Any question or discussion? Seeing now, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Abshar?
Yeah.
Judge Jones?
Yes. The resolution is adopted, and I'd like to ask our special guests if they want to come up and get a photograph for the newspaper. I'll get the commissioners to come out here with us.
I got your life in there.
Board Budget for the fiscal year July 1, 2024 to June 30, 2025. Is there a motion to acknowledge receipt?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Atkins. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Abshar. Any question or discussion? Seeing now, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Abshar?
Yeah.
Judge Jones?
Yes. Next item is acknowledgment of receipt of the report of the audit of the Pike County Fiscal Court for the year ended June 30, 2023. And I want to, first of all, before we act on this, I want to say that the people of this county owe Frankie Stacey a tremendous debt of gratitude. And I want to give a little bit of history. When I was running for this
office, when I filed to run for this office before the 2018 election, in May of 18, there were two audits released of the Pike County Fiscal Court. And those audits were scathing. I mean, they were horrible. Maybe not as bad as Elkhorn City's audit, but they were bad. Okay? And let me say why they were bad. The first audit came out, and as a result of that audit, Pike County lost its credit rating. And that's going to be important as next week, we will have the opening of the bids on the landfill expansion, potentially a multi, you know, eight or 10, maybe $12 million project. We don't know how much that's going to be. And part of that money is going to have to be borrowed. It will have to be borrowed in the form of a bond issue. That's how governments have to pay for long-term debt, whether it's roads, or courthouses, or schools, or whatever. And the problem is, because of the failures in the past, it will cost the taxpayers of this county more to borrow money. That's just a simple fact of the matter, is if you have bad credit and you go to the bank, if you can get a loan, you're going to pay higher interest rates. The same is true for this county. Then, the credit rating was downgraded after the first audit. Three weeks later, the second audit came out. And let me tell you some of the problems that were in both of those audits. Money was being transferred between accounts. It's not recorded. You had every account balance except for two was inaccurate. Bills weren't being paid on time. You had the county balancing checks, even though there were deposits upstairs in the safe, that hadn't been made. And there's a lot of other things in the audit that they didn't talk about. No planning for the future of, of the solid waste program. No, no planning for the future of what we're going to do when the landfill fills up. We had county employees that were driving unsafe equipment. In fact, I have one that we interviewed on Monday, who said when he started working that they had to use a stick to, to depress the gas pedal when they were trying to, to compact garbage. We didn't have a safety program for county workers. We had county employees that were trying, at our garage, that were trying to keep a bunch of junk on the road. We had absolutely incompetent management in certain departments. No planning for the future. And I got a lot of heat over having to raise the garbage bill. You know something? At some point, the people are going to realize that that's going to end up saving the taxpayers of this county millions of dollars because we had to make a hard decision. But Frankie Stacey was given about three weeks, and Pam was involved in that. They had about three weeks to reconcile all the checking accounts and get everything done, or the state was going to come in here and take over this county. Now, think about this. The largest county in Kentucky with close to 60,000 people was balancing checks. And Frankie came in, and Frankie worked with Pam, I guess Penny and others were involved in it, but they were able in three weeks to clean the mess up sufficiently that the Department of Local Government did not come in to take over the court. Right before the last court left office, they gave a 5% across-the-board pay raise. I'm glad they did that for the county workers. But that was the first pay raise, I believe, Frankie, that had been given in some time. Is that true? And I truly believe that the real motive wasn't to help the county workers. The real thing was to put the incoming commissioners in fiscal court behind the, behind the fiscal eight ball, in a financial hardship. The day I took over as county judge, Frankie, how much money was in the consolidated account?
Hundred thousand bucks.
Hundred thousand bucks. For a county that had a $12.5 million annual payroll. Hundred thousand dollars. And because of Frankie working with me, and the commissioners in the prior court and this court, we've been able to turn this county around financially without having to raise one penny of taxes. Not one dime of taxes have been raised. Because of our work, we were able to actually get control of the library board by people who understood what people were facing here, and the library board actually cut taxes. But this is a clean audit. This is another clean audit, and Frankie is responsible for that. It's not, it doesn't undo the damage that was done in the past, but Frankie has been a tremendous asset. And I'm going to tell you, whether I'm here or any of the members of this quarter here, when Frankie decides to retire, those are going to be some big shoes to fill. And I say that with all sincerity, Frankie, because you are probably the best county treasurer in Kentucky, and you have worked diligently. The only thing I told Frankie when I became judge is make sure we don't have any bad audits. And I know Jeff Vanderbeck has not been happy at times because we've not given him any stuff to write about. That's been my goal, so Jeff not having anything to write about. And so, the audit, again, is clean. This will be made available in my office, if anybody wants a copy of it. Frankie, I don't think there were any findings whatsoever. Is that correct?
No findings.
No findings. Go back and look at the audits from back when we had the magistrate system of the last two audits. I think it's going to be a little bit different. And I hope, I hope that when it goes back to magistrates in a couple of years, that we don't end up back in the same shape we were in. I have some concerns about that. But that was the choice of the voters, and we didn't do what the last court did, wait till four months after the election, try to sue to overturn the election. Some of you may have forgotten that the prior court tried to sue to undo the commissioner election in April, after the election had taken place. We ended up in a good financial position last year. We're going to present the, my proposed budget, and I'm going to tell you this much. I didn't put a lot of work in on the budget. Frankie did it. And I'm not taking credit for it. It was pretty much a continuation budget. We'll talk about that in a few minutes. But Frankie is absolutely the best at what he does in Kentucky. I'd put him up against anybody. And when the auditors came in and met with Frankie and had to go over this, the lady who came in, she's from Johnson County, she said, "We all fight over who gets to do Pike County's audit, because we know it's going to be easy to do, because Frankie's got everything in order." And if you look at some of the other counties around us that have had horrible audits, where we've had federal investigations result from that, we've not had that happen here. And hopefully Frankie will decide that, you know, that he's going to stay in that position for a long time. I'm not sure how much longer he'll be here. But, you know, at some point, if Frankie tells us that he's going to be retiring, that we're going to have to find somebody to replace him, that's not going to be easy to do. If you have competent management, if you have good quality people, whether it's the road department like Fabian, or finance like Pam, or solid waste like Chuck and Stephanie, we've got Jeff, we've got Darren and JJ at the garage. JJ does a tremendous job over there. We've got top quality people in emergency management, public works, senior citizens, purchasing. We've got quality people in county government. Jerry running the trails. We've got good people. Jimmy, all of you deserve to be thanked, because I think Pike County is probably in the best shape it's been in, in terms of finances and management in a long time. And this audit proves that it can be done in a responsible way, in a transparent way, in accordance with the law. And Frankie deserves a lot of, a lot of accolades because of what he's done to help keep the state from taking over the county government a few years ago, and in making sure that we've had every audit on the fiscal court side. I don't think we've had a single negative comment since, since I've been here. But think about that. How many millions of dollars have come through here? How many natural disasters we've had? How many people we've employed, and not one negative finding in any audit since I've been judge? And Frankie, that's on him. That's, Frankie deserves a credit for that. So I think everybody, I'd give Frankie a big round of applause. All right. So now, it is time. Is there a motion to acknowledge receipt of the report of the audit of the Pike County Fiscal Court for the year ended June 30, 2023?
Motion.
A motion by Commissioner Atkins. I'll make a second. Any question or discussion? Seeing now, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Abshar?
Yeah.
Judge Jones?
Yes. Next item is approval for a lease for property to be used for parking for the McCoy Well Site and authorization for payment. It's a one-year lease for 150 a month. With Pam Maynard, this has been in place for many years. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Atkins. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Abshar. Any question or discussion? Seeing now, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Abshar?
Yeah.
Judge Jones?
Yes. Next item is the approval to execute the right of entry for Phase 2 Archaeological Survey and Exploration in order to comply with Section 106 of the National Historic Preservation Act for the Coal Run Flood Damage Reduction Project with the Corps of Engineers for property identified as tax map 049, partial 66.03. This is requirement of the 202 Leviza Fork Coal Run Village Flood Damage Reduction Project. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Atkins. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Scott. Any question or discussion? Seeing now, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Abshar?
Yeah.
Judge Jones?
Yes. Next item is authorization for orders of affiliation for the Shelby Creek Volunteer Rescue Squad, Camper Fire and Rescue Squad, and Pike County Technical Rescue. This is something we have to do every year for emergency management. We did it last year as well. Is there, is there a motion to authorize?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Atkins. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Abshar. Any question or discussion? Seeing now, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Abshar?
Yeah.
Judge Jones?
Yes. We also have approval for appointments to the Pike County Broadband Advisory Board. Hilda Legg was supposed to be here. Hilda is working. She's with Legg Strategies. She's working on this project. She's running late. It is my motion to appoint Tim Fields, GIS Coordinator, CJ Childers, 9/11 Coordinator, Sharon Hall Economic Development Director, Reggie Higgins, City Manager of City of Pikeville, Thomas Olson, Project Developer and Manager from the Ad District, Steve Jackson, University of Pikeville Assistant Administrator, George Thornsberry from Big Sandy Community Technical College, Clayton Potter from Pike County Board of Education, Jim Drawan from Community Trust Bank, Jordan Gibson from Southeast Chamber, and Tammy Riley from the Health Department to this committee. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Atkins. Any question or discussion? Seeing now, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Abshar?
Yeah.
Judge Jones?
Yes. Next item is authorization to be in court order 09.07.21.003, for ARPA funds to be used for purchasing equipment, doing repairs and improvements at the Russell Fork Water Treatment Plant. This comes out of the money that we previously allocated to mountain water for water loss. It just is going to allow them to use it for some work that they need to do at the water plant that they need, they don't have the money to do. It's a good thing. Is there a motion to authorize?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Atkins. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Scott. Any question or discussion? Seeing now, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Abshar?
Yeah.
Judge Jones?
Yes. Next item is relating to the landfill bond issue. It's a second reading of proposed ordinance of the fiscal court, authorizing improving the issuance of Pike County General Obligation Bonds in a principal amount not to exceed 10 million for the purpose of financing and acquisition, construction, improvements of a landfill owned and operated by the county, and if necessary, authorizing the levy of direct income tax on all taxable property in addition to all other taxes, and the amount sufficient to pay the principal of and interest on the bonds, to the extent that revenues are not sufficient, and authorizing the taking of all other actions, including the execution, delivery of a continuing disclosure agreement, federal tax certificate, official statement, and such other documents, agreements, certificates necessary or required for the issuance of the bonds and the financing of the project. Colonel Downey, would you please present the second reading by title only?
All right. This is an ordinance of the Fiscal Court of Pike County, Kentucky, authorizing and approving the issuance of Pike County, Kentucky, General Obligation Bonds in a principal amount not to exceed $10 million for the purpose of financing the acquisitions, constructions, and improvements of a landfill owned and operated by the county.
Thank you, sir. Just so the public understands, nobody's raising taxes. All that means, that language, it simply means that at some point, if the county defaults on the bonds, that the county would be obligated to raise taxes if necessary. That's not going to happen. It's not happened in the past, to my knowledge. But that's the way that the people who buy the bonds have to make sure that they don't default on them, that they're not going to lose their money. Because if otherwise, nobody would ever buy the bonds. So is there a motion to adopt the ordinance as stated by Colonel Downey?
Motion.
We have a motion by Commissioner Abshar. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Atkins. Any question or discussion? Seeing now, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Abshar?
Yeah.
Judge Jones?
Yes. Next item is authorization for public workers to construct a concession stand at the Hardy Park Ball Field. We're going to put this on here, probably ought to pass over it, if everybody's okay with it, to let Greg get some estimates on it, just to see what it's going to cost, and whether it's something that we can do in-house or it needs to be bid out. Is everybody okay with that? All right. So we'll pass over that item. Next item is receipt of the 2024-2025 proposed budget as prepared by the Pike County Judge Executive. Again, I want to thank Frankie for, for the hard work in putting this budget proposal together. By statute, the county judge has to present the court with a budget by May 1. By June 1, we need to have, hopefully we can do it the next court meeting, have the, I guess it'd be the first reading of the proposed budget, if there's no changes that you all want to submit to be voted on or discussed. This budget, the big thing that it does is we do anticipate that there will be a reduction in coal and mineral severance. Last year, we budgeted 3 million for coal and mineral severance. We're not going to meet those numbers. We are probably going to be closer to 2.25 million, you think, Frankie? Somewhere in that neighborhood at the end of the fourth quarter?
This year?
Yes. And we anticipate that those numbers are going to go down. So this year, we reduced the coal and mineral severance tax budget estimate to revenue of 1.8 million. That's a 1.2 million reduction from the last budget. All the capital items we've included, obviously we don't have to, and that was one of the other things that the fiscal court was, was dinged on in the prior audits, is they didn't have a capital plan, meaning a plan to replace worn-out equipment in, in structures, and worn-out infrastructure over time. That's something that we've worked really hard on since I've been judge, is not only to replace the stuff that needed immediately to be replaced, but as we go forward, instead of having to buy a whole fleet of trucks at one time, buying certain pieces of equipment this year, certain items next year. So that way, everything's not going to tear up at the same time. It's not going to have to be replaced at the same time, and it reduces your maintenance costs. JJ and Darren have played a huge role. I think it's fair to say, guys, that our maintenance costs have, have gone down considerably since we've replaced the new, with the new, new trucks, new equipment. And it's safer for the workers. It's safer for the public. And so this budget is essentially, I want to use the words a continuation budget, because it's not, we're not reinventing the wheel every year. Obviously, we can Obviously, we can always amend it if our revenues come in greater than we anticipate or if they come in lower than we anticipate. So, is there a motion to acknowledge receipt of the proposed 2024-2025 budget from Pike County Judge Executive?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Commissioner Atkins is her second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Scott. Any question or discussion, seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Abshire?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes. All right. Next item is the adoption of resolution approving the execution of Rural Secondary Program Agreement between the fiscal court and the Commonwealth Kentucky Transportation Cabinet, Department of Rural and Municipal Aid and Accepting All Roads and Streets Referred To There and as being part of the county road system. Fabian has reviewed this, and this is the agreement that we have to enter into in order to receive our county road aid, or actually, this is the flex, flex funding. Something that the county really wasn't pursuing before we came in. This is $403,000 that we're going to get from the state in addition to our county road aid that we can use for Blacktop. That's roughly about what, eight, nine miles of Blacktop, Fabian? So, and every little bit helps. So is there a motion to adopt the resolution as stated?
Motion.
We have a motion by Commissioner Abshire, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Atkins. Any question or discussion, seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Abshire?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes. Next item is second reading of proposed ordinance adopting Tom's Branch into the county road system. Colonel Downey, would you please present the second reading of this by title only, sir?
Judge, can I add that this road is just more or less a, just a cleanup type road? The county has been maintaining this road, but it just never was properly into the road system.
All right, Judge, this is the road at Tom's Branch, this is District Three, it's 185 feet long, 14 feet wide. It has been duly signed off, all people need to be signed off on, and I would recommend that you go ahead and approve it.
Thank you, sir. Is there a motion to adopt this ordinance adopting, or?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Abshire, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Atkins, any question or discussion, seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Abshire?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes. But Greg, anything today?
Oh.
All right. I want to thank Greg for his hard work, he's been working on the landfill, trying to see what we can buy directly, that the contract pricing we're bidding that we're going to need for the landfill. So we're having to, trying to essentially cut the middleman out on a lot of this, Greg, I appreciate that. And Greg has also, something we've got to do is where we're trying to redo the park at Johnson Bottom. And I want to say something, this is the kind of commitment that people working for the fiscal court have. Greg, this weekend, over, the grass was getting up real high down at that, where we, where we tore out a lot of that old infrastructure at Johnson Bottom, hadn't been cut, they were getting ready to have ballgames down there. Greg spent four hours of his own time with his own mower down there cutting the grass this weekend. Greg, I appreciate that. We're going to have to get, Paul, I need you to get with Jason over at the jail or, or Mr. Morris, Brian Morris, and see if we can get that put on the list. They may not know about that one to try to get it on the maintenance list. Greg, I appreciate what you do, and you've been committed to the people. And Peter Creek, I don't think anybody, I, I give Greg a hard time sometimes, but I think nobody loves the people in that community more than Greg does, and it's appreciated. Thank you. All right, Mr. Little, come on up, sir. We have the county road supervisor to give you, give us an update. Fabian, can you just give us a little bit of update on where we are with pothole patching? I had a friend of mine, Larry Doyle, up in Pond Creek, call me or left me a message wanting to know if we could get up there and get some pothole patching done.
Yeah, Judge, we are, well, you know, the plant just opened up, but actually, we've not been able to pick up until the latter part of last week because they had obligations and they wasn't running surface. We will get to the pothole patching, but as of yet, we've not, we've not filled the first pothole, but we will. I mean, everybody knows that, that's coming, we've talked about it and have a plan, so, but we will be pothole patching. Also, I'd like to say that the bridge at Drift Branch, it is coming along pretty fast now. I mean, we was able to get the beam set, we've got half of the bracing in, so, you know, hopefully by the end of this week, we'll start, we'll be laying the decking on there, and then after that, we just pour that deck, and, and I know the people down at Drift Branch will, will be very appreciative of the court for getting that bridge built.
And, and I want to say this, Commissioner Scott has worked really hard to get this done.
Oh, he has.
And he's not been happy because we've had two washouts of the bypass.
Yeah.
But he deserves to be, you know, he deserves a lot.
Commissioner Scott has a passion for this job, I mean, and he takes it very serious, as he should, and everyone should applaud him for that.
Well, that's why I wanted to mention it, because he has been, you know, really concerned about getting this done, knows it needs to be done, and I want to thank him very much for his advocacy on behalf of the folks over in that area.
I appreciate it, I sure do. I was a little bit compassionate about it, you know, it, it really bothered me when, I know it can't be helped, but when the bypass is gone and them people standing over there, that just broke my heart.
Yeah, hopefully, we're going to get that taken care of.
Yeah.
Oh, we're on the road now. Yeah.
I tell you what, it's like when Fabian built that bridge up there at Penny, Penny Bottom, and it had, when the state rated, it had a 100-ton weight limit, you could move three divisions of the US Army over it and it wouldn't, I mean, you could move, I mean, he knows how to build a bridge that way. Those bridges will be there long after we're gone.
Judge, at the time, I have, only other thing I would like to do is, I know you had mentioned it, but I'd just like to say, you know, for the family of Peewee, that how much he's going to be missed here at the county. Not only did I always consider Peewee as a friend personally, but Peewee was just the type of employee that, that you wanted. I mean, Peewee came, done his job, went home, he didn't get caught up in all the drama that you can on this job. Peewee didn't get caught up in any of that. He, he done, he was a great employee.
Well, you know, we grew up with him.
Yeah.
And it's a great family. And, I mean, I know the entire family looks like you do, and grew up with him, and, you know, Peewee was tough as nails. He was not, from the time he was, came to school at Virgie as, as a young boy. But it's a big loss for the county, and Charles and Trudy, that was, you know, his parents, his kids, I mean, a lot of people really thought a lot of Peewee, and it's, it's a big loss for the county, the road department, and, you know, we just want to continue, you know, pray for his family and, and, you know, especially his children. I mean, you know, just a tragic accident that shouldn't happen, you know, died way too young, 53-years-old, and, you know, but again, and we're going to talk about this, about the funeral, it'll be Thursday, I think it.
Thursday.
Is it Thursday at 11:00?
Thursday. Yeah, I think it was one.
It may be, it may be one, and, but we're going to talk about that after executive session, so.
Yeah.
All right.
But that's all I have.
All right. Is there a motion to approve the county commissioners recommended road maintenance and completed work orders? Motion by Commissioner Atkins, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Scott, any question or discussion, seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Abshire?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes. All right, treasurer's business, Mr. State.
Acknowledge receipt of the sheriff and clerk's 2550 report for March 2024.
Is there a motion to authorize, or to acknowledge receipt, the sheriff and clerk's 2550 report for March 2024?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Atkins, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Scott, any question or discussion, seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Abshire?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes.
Authorize payment of the expenditure approval list dated April 23rd, 2024, plus any other utility bills received before checks are run.
Is there a motion to authorize payment of the bill, expenditure approval list dated April 23rd, plus any other utility bills received before the checks are run?
Okay.
Motion by Commissioner Abshire, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Atkins, any question or discussion, seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Abshire?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes. I do have a question, okay?
Authorization of an annual standing order to pre-approve certain recurring expenses for fiscal year 2024, 2025. This will basically cover payroll and utility bills that we can pay without court orders, and it'll be attached to the budget once it's approved for the first reading.
Okay. Hang on one second, Frankie, I do have something I want to talk about. I want to talk about these psychiatric evaluations for Mountain Camp. It looks like between the exams and the advocacy and support program grant, that the bills are $81,000 for Mountain Camp.
$41,000 of that to Mountain Camp of Pressensburg is for the medical health care at the jail.
Okay.
You'll see at the main bottom of page 40, of 36, it's the 41,000. But...
Nevertheless, you're talking 40,000 for Mountain Camp for the month?
And actually, if you look at the one before that, there's 14,000 more that goes to Pike Will. So there's 16, 14,000 there, and then there's 40,000 that goes to Pressensburg.
I mean, $55,000 for evaluation?
Yes, $55,000 for evaluation.
For one month?
For one month.
I mean, something's got to give on that. In the legislature, and we've talked to our district judges, they've worked on it, but I mean, by statute, we're required to pay that, there's got to be something done about that. I mean, you're talking, and that's one of the highest ones we've had in it, Frankie.
Highest in a long time, yeah. It usually runs about 20, 25,000 a month, but this is...
I mean, that's a lot of money, guys.
It is.
I mean, in, in reality, the fiscal court should not have to pay for psychiatric evaluations that are ordered by the court system. We're not part of the court system. That should be picked up by the state. And I'm going to talk to Senator Wheeler about it in our legislative delegation, something needs to be done on that.
It's law.
That's a lot of money right there, guys. So, I wanted just to bring that to your attention, because when I went through that, I had some questions about it, and it's just a recurring expense, and I, I don't get it. So, I don't know why something's not been done on that. All right. Last item is authorization of standing order to approve, pre-approve certain recurring expenses. This will be attached to the budget for fiscal years 2024, 2025. Is there a motion to authorize?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Atkins, is her second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Scott, any question or discussion, seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Abshire?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes. All right. Anything else, Frankie?
Paul, ahead.
All right. Next item is executive session, we do have need for executive session today for potential litigation and personnel matters related to specific personnel. Colonel, would you please instruct the public in the court on the relevant provisions that the Kentucky Open Meeting Law is or pertains to executive session?
Yes, Judge, under Kentucky Revised Statute 61.810, you're, you all are allowed to go into executive session under paragraph C to discuss posed, proposed or pending litigation, and in paragraph F to discuss specific personnel issues.
Is there a motion to enter into executive session?
Motion.
We have a motion by Commissioner Atkins, is her second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Scott. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Abshire?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes. We'll be in executive session, return to call, it's your... This time, I'll call the court back to orders, is there a motion to adjourn from executive session?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Atkins, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Scott. Any question or discussion, seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Abshire?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes. It is my motion to acknowledge termination of Andrew Smith as a CDL driver, Road Lot Three, effective 4/22/24, to acknowledge the hiring of James Garfield Thacker as a welder on special crew at a 5H rate of pay, effective 4/8/24, to acknowledge Cameron Chase Smith as manager of the Johnson Bottom Pool at Freeburn, Kentucky, in a Hardy Park at a rate of 4,000 per the contract as a, as a contract employee, effective 5/20/24, and also to allow any member of the road department to attend the funeral services tomorrow for Charles Peewee Tackett with pay. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Atkins, any question or discussion, seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Abshire?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes. We have a special guest that is here with us, Ms. Hilda Legg from Legg Strategies. You know, we appointed the committee for the broadband, would you just come up and introduce yourself at the microphone here at the table and just give, give the court a little information about the broadband initiative that, that you worked so hard on? Hilda retired from rural development and is married to a Pike County native, has been a big ally for rural Kentucky, and we appreciate your friendship and your help on this issue, but you have the microphone.
Well, thank you very much, I appreciate that. Yes, I've been advocating for rural Kentucky and, and rural communities across the country for many years through my work with USDA, Rural Utility Service, and then Rural Development. I am married to a Pike County boy, so that makes me particularly interested in Pike County, but always with my work at Appalachian Regional Commission in Washington, the Center for[1633.15] my work at Appalachian Regional Commission in Washington, the Center for Rural Development and all, we've just always been focused on our rural communities. And as you all know, the broadband infrastructure is the infrastructure that is necessary today. So Kentucky has one point one billion dollars coming to it from the federal government to invest in building out where there is not high-speed broadband. The new definition is a hundred megabits download and twenty megabits upload. So there's probably not a whole lot of Pike Countyans, especially out in our rural communities, that actually have access to that. So, in anticipation of this mil- a billion dollars being spent in Kentucky, we are trying to make sure that we identify and find those households, those areas in Pike County that do not have high-speed connectivity. Then, the job that we have is to how to find and put together a project that would go forward and compete for that billion dollars in order to bring that infrastructure here. Now, none of building this infrastructure, just like roads, none of it happens overnight. But the biggest problem is in any infrastructure, whether the judge knows it's water or anything else, it costs you more to get into those rural areas. And areas like Pike County that with the higher mountains and the hollers and, you know, the concentration of the households that are up in a holler, you gotta get there first. You gotta build that mile of waterline or build that mile of fiber. And so, the SOAR organization applied to the agency that I used to run in Washington for a grant called Technical Assistance. We don't build, it's just under four hundred thousand, but we are supposed to be working with the community to help them understand how we can get projects put together that would go after this billion dollars. That's the bottom line on it. It'll be a two-year process. So, the judge was kind enough, and I thank you all very much for approving his recommendation. What we wanted to do is listen to the community. You know, Kobe Hall at SOAR and I, I'm the lead consultant on the project and working with Kobe. And we think the people of Pike County are the ones who know where those communities are. And those of yous that member the fiscal courts, you know who hollers, who calls you up, who fusses at you, that sort of thing, complains. And so, we are gonna put together this committee that has some technical expertise. And in the month of May, now, this is something that is coming down from the state, between May the sixth and June the third, there will be a process. I can't tell you exactly how that's going to happen, but there will be a process where individuals in their home will have the opportunity to do a speed test, take a picture of that speed test, and then we have to report it to, to an entity that uploads that onto the official map of the United States, coming out of the Federal Communication Commission. That map will become the official map of who has broadband and who doesn't have broadband. So, all federal funding will have to met, will have to come through that map. So, while we intended, Kobe and I, when we wrote the grant, to do more community engagement on the front end, to get out into your communities, get to know the people and talk to them about it, when, by the time the money was, you know, was allotted in January, we said, we gotta get on the map. I mean, right now, the map is gonna be the critical piece that all federal funding money will come into Pike County and other, every other county in Kentucky. So, for us to engage our communities, we really appreciate you, Judge, putting that list together, people who had expertise, like we have someone from the bank. The banks know we're branch banks, they don't have it. School system knows where the kids can. Health Department knows those. So those are the entities we want to gather around, talk with, and work with, and we'll begin to try to lay out this process. We'll, we will come back at any point in time that you all would want to us to report on how that's going. But they will be our, sort of our community outreach source of information. And then we'll have to follow the state guidelines. There's a webinar on May second. Jeannie, I will send that to you. Anyone can get on that webinar, that the state will be telling us exactly how that reporting mechanism will actually play out and what has to be done. So she could share it with any of you members, just if you want to get on, anybody can get on that, on that webinar and listen to the state office. Megan Sandfoss is the one who runs that under Governor Beshear. And so, that's our process, but we really appreciate you all giving us these individuals that are highly capable, understands some of the challenges of building out broadband, but are, where we really want to get is into those rural areas and find out. Now, there'll be places we can't go because somebody else has promised that they're gonna build, and those get what we call marked out or encumbered. So there will be some things, and I'm glad to come back and report anytime, Judge, on how the project itself is progressing, or report back to you all in any way, or come to provide any answers that I can, or if I don't know the answer, I'll get you an answer. So, how's that? Any of you have any questions now, or Judge, you have any further?
I don't think so. It was, the meeting we had over at Big Sandy was a good start.
Right, right.
And it is something, because, you know, and I think I'd made the point over in that meeting, we've got people working for internationally known companies who live here. We had a lady who called because she was upset because her, her internet service provider was, you know, was down too often. She worked for ancestry dot com. And, you know, a lot of people have gone through ancestry and, and signed up for a subscription and, or done the DNA testing. We've got people who, who have the ability to make a living here. And, you know, in my law practice, we're starting to see more insurance adjusters work for home. Lawyers are working for home. You know, instead of having to travel across the country for a deposition, a lot, a lot of it's being done remotely now, which is a completely, it, it, you know, the last three years have changed a lot of businesses and industries. A lot of your brick and mortar real estate companies have, have seen a decline because people are working from home now.
That's right.
Companies don't need the large office footprints that they've had in the past, and that really gives us an opportunity to create jobs here. Congressman Rogers was well ahead of the curve on that issue. You know, when he was talking about Silicon Holler, it's something we can do. There are jobs, and I was skeptical at first. I'm thinking, you know, are we gonna be able to put enough people to work? It's not gonna replace coal jobs, but there are jobs that can be, that people can stay here at home, make a good living, working from home. And, but they have to have dependable broadband in order to do that.
That's right.
And there are certain areas of the county where it's probably not gonna be economically viable for a private company to do it, simply because the cost to put the infrastructure in is not gonna pay for itself with the number of customers that they have to pick up.
That's exactly right.
And that's a business decision.
That's exactly right.
I mean, you're not gonna see Walmart build a super center in a town of five hundred people. Why? Because it can't pay for itself. These internet service providers are not gonna spend millions of dollars to serve a handful of companies, in most cases.
That's right.
Or, or a handful of, of individuals, because it's never gonna pay for itself. And most businesses are in, are in business to make money. So, the government infusion of money will help get broadband into areas. You know, you're gonna have broadband in Pike and coal run. That's not gonna be an issue because of the density of population. And we've got some local companies like Intermountain Cable, and they've really made an investment in areas like Brushy, where you don't have a lot of people. And, you know, we've got, and, and because they do feel that obligation. But nevertheless, there are areas that are never gonna get it without the federal assistance. And, and, you know, I can't wait till we get, can speed this up a little bit.
Well, that's exactly, you're exactly right. You understand it. Not, not all elected officials do understand the business case on that, and the federal money will be seventy-five percent grant, twenty-five percent match. So even the local providers have to come up. And I will tell you, two years ago, we would be building in, I think we was doing a project, looking at one in Harlan County, and it was costing anywhere from about forty thousand a mile to build out. Right now, they're over a hundred thousand. Why? Everybody knows the money's out there. Fibers in short supply, you know, engineering firms get, there's so many people now going after all this federal, big federal money. So, it just makes the whole dynamic even more expensive than what it would have been two years ago to have. So, those are just things we have to deal with. So, it's a huge investment for a provider. Part of what we've been supposed to do with that RUS money was to try to attract other providers in. And Kobe and I tried to. We invited them to the meeting that you came to. We just don't have many people that want to come in to Pike County and, and start a company or, you know, there's better places they can go to make more return on their investment, bottom line, because of your demographic con- concentration and where it's at. So, we're trying to work very closely with Intermountain folks and working with them to go after some federal fund, other federal funding that's coming up sooner. The biggest challenge we have right now is where companies went in for federal communications, and they pledged to build up in a certain area, but they haven't done that yet. And that because the federal government had pledged, had made a deal with them to build in that area, and their timeframe isn't done, that keeps us from going after that pot of money. So that, that's gonna be a challenge we gotta, that within Pike County. And as members of the court, you all might say, well, we didn't get anything done here. Well, it may be because another company had already promised that they were gonna build. So it gives us something to hold their feet to a fi- to the fire, that says you have to build by that time, but we'll be working through that. And there is an effort at the national level for those entities who do not follow through. They'd be heavily fined and penalized. And so, it's not always just black and white and easy to understand. So please feel free. The judge and Jeannie have my contact information. Kobe, right, we'll come over here anytime just to meet with you all and to talk about and update if you want to, because this is not gonna be an overnight project. But, but we want to make some, we're gonna make a really concentrated effort. When we went for this money, we could've gone as many counties as we wanted to, and we focused only on Pike County. Because when I look at the map of eastern Kentucky, I see more need in Pike County right now in terms of just your landmass is so big, your geography and topography is so challenging. So we specifically targeted Pike County for this effort. So, we really look forward to working with you all very, very much. And again, feel free to get my contact information, email me, call me, that's fine. Thank you, Judge.
Hilda, just let us know what we can do to be of assistance to move this forward.
Aye, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Jeannie's been a great to work with.
I work for Jeannie. Je- Jeannie's my boss. Look, Je- she does a great job, and we, we couldn't make it without her. She's, now that I've said that, I'll never live it down.
She's got her hands full.
All right. What's that?
She's got her hands full.
She's got her hands full to deal with. All right. Thank you, ma'am. All right. Anything from the county department supervisors? Anything? I'm gonna bust through this real quick. Judge Spears, anything? Anything from county attorney? Anything for me, the county commissioners? We'll start with Commissioner Atkins.
Yeah, Judge, like you said, I've got a funeral to attend. I'd like for everybody to keep the family of Jamie Branum Coleman in their prayers. She, her husband Bob, he's been assistant chief of our department for the last thirty years. She passed away on Saturday, and they're really, he's having a rough time. Also, Mikey Harden, his family, he worked with me when I started driving the garbage truck. He was my loader back in the day. He, he was, you know, fatally killed in the ATV accident in Phelps the other night. And Cody Sinsell, both of those boys, it was separate accidents from what I can gather, but both of them was part of Phelps' fire department. So, just like for everybody to keep those families and everybody in their prayers.
Um, I would echo your sentiments, you know, about, about Mikey. His cousin Kyle is in, Kyle Harden is in, is apparently still dealing with some significant injuries. And then the family of Cody Sinsell over at, at Freeburn that was in the AT, another ATV accident. And I was gonna mention that, you know, we're working hard to develop ATV related tourism here. They are dangerous. Both of those crashes were on state roads. We just encourage people to wear their shoulder harnesses and their lap belts, because it's imperative that if you're on the road, whether it's a vehicle, a car, truck, SUV, whatever it is, or a side-by-side, to please wear your seatbelts. Helmets on a, on a side-by-side are not a bad idea either. A lot of people don't do that. But we just encourage people to be, to be careful. We, again, will extend our condolences to the family, the Harden family, as well as the Sinsell family. They're, they're great people. And Mikey's dad is Doug, and we wanna, I think, I'm pretty. It's, it's, it's a tragic, tragic situation.
Yeah.
And, you know, Stevie Kinder is, is his father-in-law, and, you know, they're just, they're great friends of ours, they're great friends of my dad's. And just, it's awful. It's just something that can't be undone. And again, remember those families in your prayers as well.
And I think the other boys in the hospital, I think, when Hillary mounted his boat.
I think so.
It walked.
I think so. It's, it's just, it's just a bad situation.
Bad situation. Pray for them all.
Pray for them. Jimmy, anything else?
No, pretty.
Commissioner Scott, you have anything?
I'd just like to thank all the workers of the county, and I think we're about ready to go back blacktopping, ain't we, baby? Just wanna let everybody know that don't take, take it easy around with the blacktop and give them time, you know. So, do a good job, yeah.
Yeah, we get people complaining it's the roads block, but, you know, you can't pave these one-lane roads or these narrow hollers without blocking the roads. I mean, if you want, you know, we just can't do it. There's no other way.
It's impossible on a one-lane road.
Yeah.
Can't do it. That's all I have, yeah.
I don't believe I have anything else. At this time, is there any other business to come before the court? If not, then I'm gonna ask Commissioner Absher to say the benediction, remember the Mals Sinsell and Harden families, as well as the Tackett family. Appreciate that.
Let's pray. First, from gracious and kind-loving heavenly Father, Father God, you know the needs of those people far better than we're even able to ask. And I pray you a blessing upon all those families, Lord, that's lost their loved ones. And, Lord, I know that you're the great Comforter, and I know that you can comfort them. They just look to you for guidance and understanding. Father, I pray for each and every member of this court. I'm thankful to be a part, and I, I really appreciate the effort that they put forth, Lord, to try to move this county forward. I pray, oh, Lord, this day that you'll just bless us and watch over us, forgive us when we fail. You go with us, Lord, each and every day. Father God, we ask all these favors and blessings in the name of your son and our Savior, Jesus Christ, and amen.
Amen. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Atkins, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Scott. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Abshire?
Yes.
Judge Jones?
Yes, we are adjourned.